I know. [laughing] Isn't that dear?
When we've had other problems, put it on speaker and put it right up to the mic.
Me too. That was the longest hour. I was like, how long is this?
You are now answering a call from the queue.
Hello, Major Dave?
Yes.
Okay, we've got you online.
We've got about one minute, Major Dave, and we'll call this meeting to order.
Well, I really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. This is Thursday, April 21st, 2022. This is Kodiak Island Borough Regular Meeting. We're going to call it to order. We are at the Assembly Chambers on Borough Hill. Major Dave, if you will please give us the invocation.
Thank you very much. Join me, please. Gracious heavenly Father, we just take a moment to bow our heads and give you the praise and glory. Thank you for the privilege of freedom that we experience here throughout our Kodiak Island, Father. Right now, we lift up our mayor, our assembly members and staff and give you thank you for your blessing upon them as they use their time and talents to the betterment of our world. Father, we ask you for this continued blessing throughout this season of hope. May there be a glorious hope shared in our lives. Thank you, Father, in Jesus' sacred name. We pray amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We are gathered on the traditional homeland of the Sukpiahtalutik people. We acknowledge the ten tribes of the Kodiakalutik region. We recognize the Alutik culture that enriches our community to this day. With that, can we have a roll call, please? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Art.
Here.
Mr. Delgado.
Here.
Mr. Griffin. Mr. Smiley. Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Turner.
Here.
Ms. Williams.
Here.
Mayor Roberts.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Okay, Scott?
Move to excuse Assembly Members Jared Griffin and Scott Smiley due to sickness?
Motion on the second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Same sign? Motion carries. We need to have approval of the agenda. The consent agenda is a number of minutes that you can read on the agenda if you'd like. Scott?
Yeah, move to approve the agenda and consent agenda?
We have a motion and a second. Seeing probably we don't have any comments, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Same sign? Motion carries. That brings us to citizens' comments. If you're -- this is a regular meeting, so your comments will be part of the official record. If you're calling in, it's 1-907-486-3231 or toll-free 1-855-492-9202. There are two public hearings on the agenda. One is for Communication Tower Approval Criteria, and the other is establishing an opioid Settlement Fund. So those, if you want to comment on either one of those, you can do so during the regular public hearing. Please state your name clearly for the record. If you're calling in, make sure you turn off your listening device so we don't get feedback. And if you're here, please sign in when you state your name. Thank you.
I want to start by saying I was really impressed with how well and efficiently you guys did last meeting, staff and assembly members included. Just want to give you a little attaboy for that. I -- last meeting, I mentioned I was a little concerned about being overly optimistic with the budget and seeing that personally that -- correct me if I'm wrong, I know I'm not really as smart about this as you guys are, but a lot of this money seems to be not guaranteed and probably not even coming forth next year. So if we can somehow roll over any excess we do happen to have or be a little bit more frugal, be great. So understandably, I did take note when one of the assembly members mentioned a pay raise. And so I talked to that person and I said, how much do you get paid? I was thinking, well, $7,000 years to the least or whatever or something. Anyways, they said $300 a month. I literally laughed. So I'm on the playing zone. We make $200 a month. We only have two meetings. You guys have four meetings. I know that the amount of commitment that many of you guys have. I know some assembly members here that go out of their way to go to city meetings, to planning and zoning meetings. And I know others of you guys are on committees voluntarily and some of you drive a lot farther. You have most of your time on the phones probably spent with -- got to do with business like this sort of thing and copy machines, internet, paperwork, all kinds of little overhead things. And he explained to me that it was really meant to be just kind of a compensation for that sort of thing. It wasn't, you know, and I think you, like me, or most of you are like me, that you'd be glad to even take some stuff out of your own pocket to serve the public because we do love Kodiak and we do love the people here and we want to give back. But at the same time, I think Kodiak needs to show some appreciation or respect for you guys. And so I believe, I just submit to you guys that this is probably the first time you ever heard this, ever, but I believe you deserve a raise because you aren't getting paid, you're just getting some compensation out of pocket. I think that whoever, you and whoever in the future, a bare minimum of 400, which would be double planning and zoning since you have four meetings, we have two meetings, that'd be a bare minimum, which may be appropriate since we are looking at maybe need to tighten things up, tighten budgets up and stuff like that. But obviously, I -- some of you are probably spending quite more, quite a bit more than that, out of pocket for just, you know, on and on. Anyways, I recognize that. I just want to know, I appreciate what you do and I appreciate the fact that, you know, you aren't doing this for the paycheck. So anyways, that's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you, Court. Anybody else in the room? Do we have any phone calls, Nova?
No.
No phone calls? Anybody else in the room? Okay, then we will go on to our regular meeting. We have no awards and presentations. How about committee reports? Anybody have a committee report? Scott?
Yeah, I was going to report that the Cook Inlet Regional Citizens Advisory Council had their Board of Directors meeting on, virtually, on April 8th here. And just a couple of things. I want to say that there was representatives from Hill Corp. that provided an update on the company's operations in Cook Inlet and noting that 2022 marks 10 years for the company in Alaska on there. Another one was updates came from Alaska Department of Environmental Conservation detailing the department's plan for unit realignment that will add a Western Region for state regulators while separating Kodiak Island and Cook Inlet from management. I don't personally like the idea of separating that because of the impacts that come down through Shellco, Cook Inlet, Shellco to Kodiak. So, but just, we'll see what happens. And then there's the Alaska Department of Natural Resources gave the board an update on preliminary natural gas exploration activities in the Susitna Valley and announced that work for potential geothermal permitting is beginning for St. Augustine Island on there. So we'll see how that goes. And then there's a report and update on the U.S. Coast Guard Alternative Planning Compliance Issue and Recent Federal Regulation Changes. So just FY, we'll continue monitoring that. So that's all I got. Thank you.
Scott, did I hear you right? They want to separate Kodiak out from Cook Inlet?
Yeah, they're creating what they're calling a Western Region. And I thought that would be everything kind of on the other side of the peninsula, but that doesn't appear to be the way they're looking at it right now. So we'll see what happens with that.
Okay, thank you, Scott. Anybody else have a report? Amy?
Thank you. I attended onboarding training for the Prince William Sound Regional Citizens Advisory Council this week and started to learn about everything that they do, and it's an incredible amount of work. They have 14 employees, which I had no idea, so it was neat to learn about that. I will be traveling to my first meeting with them, May 4th through 7th, and that's our annual meeting where they get all the board members together in Valdez. So excited to do that. I also had a Swampsea Board meeting this morning. They are right now concentrating on their one-year rewrite of the Southwest Alaska Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, and they are also helping make people in the Southwest Region aware that the state of Alaska is rewriting their comprehensive economic development strategy. So I went to that session and Assembly Members Delgado and Turner were both in there, so we all had a chance to put input into the state-level SEDs, and I think that was a great opportunity. So Swampsea continues the good work of making it known that Southwest Alaska is very interested in mariculture and watching out for our fishing interests. So both great boards to be on, and they're doing some great work in our area.
Thank you, Amy. Anybody else? James and then Joe.
Yeah, we had a consolidation committee meeting on Monday. We did have a quorum, which was for the first time. Thank you for appointing Mr. Neff. We discussed streetlights, whether it would be service districts, included in service districts or road services, or whether it would be just a community-wide service and then also emergency services, fire EMS type situations, and we'll go on to the next.
Thank you, James. Joe?
Yes, I think Assembly Member Williams did a good one for the SEDs, but I also attended regional, the Kodiak Island Regional Leadership Forum that was the villages. And one of the things, it was a fisheries meeting, so one of the interesting topics was bycatch. So I think that there's going to be trying to find a way to lower bycatch out or find different ways of using bycatch, but it's an ongoing thing. So I think I'll start reporting on that. It's every four months, I think, so that was something different.
Anybody else? Boy, everybody's been busy this week.
No, not really me, but I am going to at least take this opportunity to throw out there that for the first time in two years, we had a quorum on the Parks and Rec Committee that lasted for about five minutes. We had a meeting scheduled for next Tuesday, now canceled as a result of no longer having a quorum. So I figure I'll take this opportunity to solicit the public and let folks know if they're interested to reach out that the Parks and Rec Committee is looking actively for members. So, thank you.
I think we have one that's applied, so.
Sorry, I didn't turn on my -- I apologize, I didn't turn on my microphone.
I didn't either. It was an aside. So I think we're all done with committee reports. We will move on. We have a public hearing. First one is on ordinance number FY 2022-14, Amending Kodiak Island Borough Code Regarding Communication Tower. Scott?
Move to adopt ordinance number FY 2022-14.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Staff report, please.
Good evening, everybody. I think this is the fourth time that you guys have seen this ordinance come before you. It is only changing the approval criteria for application for Communication Towers since it's more technical than other zoning compliance ordinances that we have and, sorry, documents that we receive. So this is making it similar to other, or, that we receive in timeframe. Sorry.
Okay, thank you. With that, we'll have some public input. We'll close the regular meeting and we'll open the public hearing on ordinance number FY 2022-14. If you'd like to comment on it on the phone, it's 907-486-3231 or toll-free 1-855-492-9202. Anybody wishing to comment on this ordinance? Seeing none, we'll open it to the Assembly for comment. Anybody have any more comments on this? I think we've, like Seema said, we've seen it four times. Okay, with that, then we'll have a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Art.
Yes.
Mr. Delgado.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Ms. Williams.
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes, Your Honor.
That brings us, excuse me, that brings us to ordinance, a public hearing on ordinance FY 2022-16, Establishing an Opioid Settlement Fund. Do we have a motion, Scott?
Move to adopt ordinance number FY 2022-16.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Staff report.
Well, I decided to give Dora the night off, especially because we're very grateful that she welcomed her grandchild into the world and all is well with the health of everyone in her family. So that was great news. So I'm here to present this public hearing tonight regarding the opioid settlement fund. We recently heard that we would be receiving $10,000 for, annually, for 10 to 18 years regarding some legal matters that had been worked out, and this was our settlement arrangement. In my manager's report, I'll be giving some clarification about what the AML told us about this opioid funding in an ongoing way, but what we're doing here is just establishing a fund to collect those monies. So that's all that this very exciting topic is, but we need the Assembly's approval to set up such funds.
Okay, with that, we'll close the regular meeting and we'll open a, the public hearing. Anybody in the public wishing to call in? It's 907-486-3231, toll-free 1-855-492-9202. Please state your name and turn off the hearing, your listening devices, so we don't hear backfeed. And if you're here, please state your name and sign in. Okay, seeing none, we will open it to the Assembly for comment. Any comments? No, it's pretty straightforward. Okay, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Delgado.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Ms. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Art.
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes, Your Honor.
With that, it brings us to the Borough Manager's Report. Roxanne?
Thank you very much. So I have several updates tonight, so I hope you'll bear with me. So the first of which is that I've been working with staff because we have been getting a couple of complaints about Alaska waste and charges that commercial properties are getting. So we got a clarification from our attorney about an ambiguity that we found within the contract. And so we'll be hopefully working with Alaska waste to alleviate some of these concerns and figure out what the appropriate charges are for folks. But that also begs a question of some other contract things that we can clarify within the Alaska waste contract. And so I may be asking for the committee that reviewed that beforehand to reconvene if you'd be willing, and I'll talk about that more in a work session, but I just wanted to let you know that that might be something coming forward that we want, will want to consider some other Alaska waste contract amendments if the Assembly's willing to partake. So in other news, we received, are receiving complaints. The original complaint that I received was that next to the Chinnyack School is a dumpster and that bears had overtaken that dumpster, and I was asked if we could please move that dumpster ASAP. And so obviously, when I hear a complaint like that, I get very anxious because I want the school kids and the community to stay safe. After reaching out to our engineering and facilities folks who then worked with Alaska waste, we got the prioritization to move the actual dumpster, but it wasn't to the location where the community wanted it because it was further outside of town next to the Department of Transportation dumpster that already exists. But I'm really grateful that we at least created some safety for the school. I didn't, I learned that there was not many bears, but there was a bear. And so I just don't want a bear to habituate to that near the school. And I also want to get the word out that this is a very temporary thing that's going on right now. So I know it's an inconvenience for the folks in the Chinnyack community, but we are also working steadfastly to get a platform built next, near the logging road. And so that platform will get developed so we can then take the dumpster that's now at the DOT closer to town so the Chinnyack residents won't be so inconvenienced. And we hope to get this all accomplished within three weeks or less. And so I know it's not ideal, but at least we're trying to create the safety for the school, and I hope that the Chinnyack residents will bear with us. But I'll be happy to update the Assembly about that when we finally completed that project and that platform development and Alaska waste will move that dumpster back to a better location. In other news, on Monday, I'll hopefully, weather permitting and flight permitting, be taking a trip to Yuzinkie for a day trip. I proved to be a decent travel partner, and so I got invited to go on another trip with Tyler from Kana, and this is just a day trip that will include looking at their electrical facility, but I'd be very excited to go if it all works out. On Tuesday, I'll be attending the Kana Roundtable all day, and I look forward to participating in that and getting to meet folks, hopefully. I've been working with Scott, our attorney, on the Karlik and Larson Bay school closure issue. It's been a little bit of a runaround, but I think we finally found the right person from the state to confer with about Karlik and in Larson Bay. I've left a message for the mayor asking for if he or she is the person that I should talk to or if it's somebody else, but I'll keep working on this and we'll get information back to the Assembly. I also wanted to provide information, in case you hadn't seen it, from Mark Hickey, our lobbyist, about Senate Finance releasing a new version of their operating budget. So what he provided is that it, for, it will include full funding for fiscal year 2023 for that obligation, which is in the governor's budget and the House-passed operating budgets. The, there will be a new funding proposal for 2022 to fund the additional amount of 58% to cover what was not received in the current fiscal year. That was in the House-passed operating budget, but not in the government's, governor's proposed budget. Additionally, there was proposed new funding to pay for the state's obligation not paid from fiscal year 2017 through 2021. This results in an appropriation for another $172 million to cover these obligations, and that's not in the governor's or the House-passed operating budget. This is a reset that would mean repayment of 100% of the state's share for school bond debt reimbursement from 2017 to 2023, but our lobbyist said we have no idea what the governor thinks about the proposal, but I just wanted to make sure that we're getting this news as we continue to get through our budget process and the state makes decisions about theirs. I also hope to provide clarity about reaching out to AML about opioid and the settlement funding. So I'll be sure to also send an email about this to Assembly Member Smiley because I know he was very interested in this. So according to Nils from AML, he said, more information is coming from the state, hang tight. He also said, it's not enough money for any individual communities mostly. He said there will be multiple settlements, so expect to see more. He said there's definitely going to be an opportunity to collaborate and pool with other organizations and over time. And he said the state has 70% of funds to allocate, and our original proposal was for them to match ours, doubling what we may receive. And this is, that this is a work in progress and we expect resolution by the end of the year. So I hope that was good information from the AML about opioids, and our $10,000 does seem measly, but hopefully we can get to some better pooling of funds and better support from the state going forward. We had a meeting with the former clerk and we were able to address the documents that she was requesting, so I'm glad that we will complete that work. There's a few more documents that we'll need to find, but then that should close out this matter. In an ongoing way, I'm working with the clerk and our departments are providing information regarding a trial that we're working on, and the attorney is reviewing all those documents and making sure that all of the trial obligations are met. And then I'm also still working, I had to prod OSHA because I wasn't getting the documents that I needed to start some work that we promised to do for them, but they said they will get those documents to me soon. And that wraps up my report. I'll be happy to answer any questions the Assembly may have.
Any questions? Joe?
Um, just, when you go to Yuzinkie, I was the transportation coordinator there. I would suggest that you look at the section of the road that I had gotten some granite for, and we produced some minus D1 road topping. When you use it on, on these roads rather than a shale where you get all this dust, it is 98% dust-free. The guy that shaped the road said that he would shape it. We let it set for the, you know, 24 hours or so, and he didn't have to rework it again for six months. I, my dream for the past 10 years has been to get granite here to Kodiak for multiple different uses. And at the Konyag-Kana Roundtable, I'm going to be advocating for that some more. So I just wanted to let you know, to look at that road and hopefully it's in good condition right now, but it is, it's, it's very unique in that we were the first tribe in Alaska that got granite and produced it and put it on a road. So it's interesting.
I'll be excited to look at that. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for the manager? And moving on to the Borough Mayor's Report. Did you, Roxanne, did you get the email from the Chinnyack residents thanking us for what we were doing with the dumpster?
Actually, yeah, there were a few residents that definitely expressed appreciation because they agree that that's not the best approach in bear country to have a dumpster right next to a school.
Yeah, I, I think we should forward them, I got one, we should forward them to the whole Assembly so they know that everybody's not, I mean, people are unhappy their dumpster moved, but they're also happy that we moved quickly and we're trying to resolve this in a short amount of time to have a dumpster back in that general area. I'm also looking with, at what Mr. Hickey sent forward to us on the possibility of backward funding our, our school monies. We'll see, it's election year, maybe the button, maybe the governor will let it stand. And if that's the case, I think, I think we'll have some decisions we'll have to make as an Assembly because we will have some money to do some things. And as Mr. Neff said, rather than willy-spend it willy-nilly, maybe we could forward fund some other things of our own. I don't know, it's just an idea. Moving on, we have, first item under new business is contracts, Contract FY 2021-17. Scott?
Move to authorize the Borough Manager to execute Change Order Number 1 to Contract Number FY 2021-17 with CH2M Hill Engineers for Services Construction, Services During Construction for the Landfill Stage 3 Closure Project in an amount not to exceed $25,000.
Second. We have a motion and a second, staff report.
Good evening. This is a change order to a contract we have with CH 2M Hill, also Jacobs Engineering, for the landfill stage three closure project. In the original contract, there was funds for services during construction, which is basically responding to RFIs, reviewing submittals. We don't have any site inspections in this one, but that's also typically part of that. During the design and bid process, there was two things that took significantly more time than anticipated, which is why they're requesting more funds. One was working with the USDA on a grant application, or grant loan application that turned into a loan. And that required significant work on the bid specs. USDA had very specific specifications they wanted to use, which is not what we or Jacobs typically uses. So, there was a lot of work going through that, there was reviews with the attorney. It took a fair amount of time to get those where USDA was happy with them, so we could issue that for bid. And then, the second thing that came up during the bid process was we added blasting and processing of rock at the landfill for future cover operations. And that was not in the original bid document, so that was, we had to develop a blasting spec, we had to develop drawings to show the contractors where we wanted to blast. So, there was a fair amount of time for that as well, which is why we used more funds than we kind of anticipated to get to the point where we're at. I will say, even with this $25,000, the total design cost is probably about, I think it's like 7% of the construction cost, which is lower than we usually see, usually we're closer to about 10 or 12. So, I think staff, you know, reviewed the cost to date and the anticipated added cost, which is all a time and materials cost. And we feel comfortable recommending approval, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, with that, we'll open it up to the Assembly for questions or comments. Scott?
Thank you, Matt, for that, that update, a little bit more detailed than last week there, so I appreciate, appreciate that, so, thank you.
Anybody else? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Arnt?
Yes.
Mr. Delgado?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes, 5-0.
Okay, that brings us to resolution. Ordinance for introductions. Ordinance number FY 2022-17, amending Borough Code, removing the information about pertaining to the declaration of a disaster of emergency. Scott, I'm sorry. I thought it was all in your motion, I was going to let you do it. Then I looked at what was written there, and I said...
Okay, move to advance ordinance number FY 2022-17 to a public hearing at the next regular meeting of the Assembly on May 5, 2022.
Second. Motion and a second. Borough Clerk, do you have a staff report, or?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With your permission, I would like to refer to Assemblymember Arnt, who requested for this item to be placed on the agenda. Thank you.
She's good.
I think she's done this before.
Yeah. As we talked about this before, I've been pushing, and several Assemblymembers have been pushing, to get us out of this emergency declaration and get it off of the books was the cleanest thing to do. And then, after the budget through the summer, let's work at what we want to come up with and, and do it in a meaningful way at work sessions there. So, to me, in talking with Nova, the clerk, the easiest thing was to delete what we changed two years ago, May of two years ago. So, that's what this, that's all this is doing, is getting us back to the original, original version, and then we'll address things from there.
Comments from the Assembly? I think this is probably the cleanest way to do this. We kind of put it together in a hurry, and now we can take our time this summer and do it right, I hope. Also, I might add, we're also going to be looking at the codes dealing with the ESC and EOC, along with the city, because there's a bunch of recommendations that came out of this past two years that the city's going to change some of their codes too. So, just for public information, we're going to be looking at how we handle emergencies, so we don't get into a never-ending. No other comments, then we can have a roll call vote.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Arnt?
Yes.
Mr. Delgado?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes, 5-0.
Okay, that takes us to citizens' comments. Once again...
You got one more, Bill?
Oh!
Other items?
I was trying to get out of here, it's already too late. 28 minutes, you guys must have... All right, other items. Authorization, yeah, this is, this is one that we definitely need to look at. Authorization, since we got somebody here to present it to us. Authorization for fire protection area number one to move forward with the advertisement invitation bid for Bayside Fire Station Chief's Response Vehicle Purchase. Scott?
Move to authorize fire protection area number one to move forward with the advertisement of the invitation for bid for Bayside Fire Station's Chief's Response Vehicle Purchase.
Second. We have a motion and a second, staff report. Chief?
I appreciate you voting forward. Somebody has to be first. Let me turn it on. Sorry, I thought I was loud enough. No, I appreciate you all voting on that to move forward with it. Somebody has to be first when it comes to buying that type of vehicle, you know? An EV vehicle is, I've discussed it with Ford Motor Company at length. What sold me was that North Slope bought 12. And if they can have 12 in that kind of atmosphere and environment, we should be easily doing it here. So, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Assembly comments? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Arnt?
Yes.
Mr. Delgado?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
No.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes, 4-1.
With that, we move on to citizens' comments. If you're calling in, it's locally, it's 907-486-3231, toll-free, 1-855-492-9202. If you call in, please turn off or turn down your listening device so we don't get feedback. If you're here, and if you're calling in, please state your name for the record. And if you're here, please sign in, and all I ask is you address the Assembly as a whole and keep your comments civil. Thank you.
Thank you. Patrick Cummings here, thanks for everything you guys do, it's meaningful, significant, and important. I attended Senator Murkowski's symposium last week on infrastructure funding, and it was a whole bunch of really good information, two full days of more than a person could soak in, for sure, so I'm glad she left all the materials up there on the website and such. If I was sitting where you guys are sitting, though, I would imagine you already know all this stuff by now, it'd be quite daunting to go through this process to get access to some of these funds. And the weak points that I see really are getting the resources to get the resources, you know, finding the people who can actually perform the mechanics involved to get at the funding, much less than filling those jobs as we go along. But I just wanted to encourage you, as a member of the public, to, to seek out expertise and resources to get those resources, because there's a lot, a lot out there that, to be looked at, so, thank you much.
Thank you very much.
If he could state his name for the record.
Hmm?
Name for the record.
Patrick Cummings, yes. Cindy Collins?
We're now answering a call from the queue.
Good evening, Assembly meeting.
Oh, hello.
Go ahead, please.
Oh, yes, yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the Assembly. This is Nick Zabo. I was just listening to the, the meeting here, and I know you're going to have a public hearing on it, but I was just curious on this, the ordinance 2022-17, that what you're doing, the, the present wording doesn't require you to do anything, it just gives you the option to have meetings by teleconference or, you know, when you, when it's not in the best interest to have people physically present. I, I can't imagine why this is so controversial. I, I know there's been controversy about the operations of the ESC and the EOC and so forth, but all this does is just give you another option for how you hold a meeting. And I, I just can't understand why that's so controversial, but maybe I wasn't at the work session to know what the discussion was. But I, I think you might be, I, I just, I, I just don't think it's prudent to limit your options. I mean, emergencies are not only COVID-related, they could be a nuclear disaster, it could be a, a natural disaster like a tsunami or something like that, where you wouldn't have time to come to a meeting and amend things. This would at least give you an option to, to have another way to still continue to function, so, thank you very much.
Thank you, Nick. Any other calls? Anybody else in the Assembly room? I don't think there's anybody else here that hasn't already spoke. Okay, with that, we will move on to Assemblymember's comments, started here last time, so James, we'll start with you.
Yeah, community cleanup is in a week or two, I believe?
May 7.
May 7, thank you. And that got me thinking, we had sent a bunch of recycling down to Seattle Arcanary that I work at, sent a bunch of recycling down to Seattle last year after the end of the season, and it was quite expensive. We do a lot of recycling here on the island, but there, there isn't a lot of things that can be recycled, so the items that we can't recycle on the island, we sent, we sent south. Part of that is plastics, and so, I've been investigating plastics to pellets, which is a great alternative to, to the landfill, which is what's happening. And a lot of these new machines that they're, that they're coming out with, you basically take the plastic, you put it into the machine, it doesn't have to be washed, the machine washes it on its own, separates any, any excess oils or waters or any of that, and basically produces a pellet, which, which can be sold. And I think that at some point, the Solid Waste Advisory Board should probably look into something like that for, for solid waste. And so, I just, it was something, a topic that came up today, and I thought I'd mention it, and I thought that it was a great idea, but it's not a cheap idea, so it's something that the Solid Waste Committee could probably, probably look into, and that's all I've got tonight. Thanks.
Thank you, James. Joe?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to thank again the staff for preparing us for these meetings. The staff reports are always great, and getting the paperwork beforehand throughout the week really helps us when we get to these meetings. It also helps that we have work sessions and stuff. I, I like this operation, it goes well, especially with the staff that we have, so thank you.
Scott? Yeah, I guess one thing I would speak to is the, the school bond debt, which is, it's basically in the Senate finances version of the budget, of the operating budget, which would be in addition to what the House has passed. What, what that is, is basically, if you remember last November, I was speaking to that, that I wanted to see us do a resolution, and people didn't think it could happen. I'm just tickled that it's happening, because I also was testifying in regards to that. That would be a game changer for us, and it's not just us. The biggest recipient is Anchorage. A tune of, their bond debt is roughly, well, three years ago, there were 40 million of the 90-some million dollars for the entire state. Matsui, I think, was around 14 million on there. Kodiak was 5.8 million. So, this would be great. We, one of the, one of the things that I had spoke to when I testified was that I'm in favor of, the state has an obligation on these oil company tax credits that they passed. And in the House, they put 400 million in there, so I think I was kind of pushing behind the scenes too, saying, "Okay, I don't have a problem, but let's take care of the school debt for communities also." So, I'm, it's, I hope it, I hope it sails through Conference Committee, I hope it sails through the Senate, then to the Conference Committee, and hopefully, it sails through the governor. So, we got a long ways to go, but we'll see what happens. I'm hoping, I'm hoping. That's all I got, thank you. Jeff?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I think I would just add to Assemblymember Arnt's comments in that this is an opportunity and a time for members of the community to reach out to our elected officials down in Juneau and the governor's office. It is an election year, and I think it's worth this community's time to, to ask the state to backward fund bond debt and to fund bond debt fully this year. If, if we're not going to look at fiscal planning for the future now that oil is, is coming in at a big dollar again, then, then let's take care of what's in front of us and what's behind us that we haven't taken care of in recent years. And I, I think that happens by enough people in our community reaching out. You know, when we look at our budget for, for purposes, we, we budget both operation expenses for the school district and bond debt reimbursement, and those are two different things in my mind. In the bond debt reimbursement, there's a state responsibility to help with that, as well as, as operations, but they haven't been in recent years. And if that's important to the community, and it's important to the community to keep our taxes at the level they're at, then I think it's worth somebody's time to make a phone call to Juneau and say, "Come on, people, let's, let's do what's right, we're sitting on good money in the state right now, and let's fund bond debt." Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. And Amy, I know you don't have anything to say tonight, because you want to get out early.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just two quick things, as Assemblymember Turner mentioned, Kodiak Community Cleanup Day is happening on May 7, so I encourage everyone to get out and beautify their spaces. Saw people out in the ditches, out by the fairgrounds the last couple of days, so whoever you are, thank you. And the other thing, I've gotten a couple of emails about some concerns about how we are handling our interactions with bears. I know before the meeting started tonight, I was showing videos that people have been sending me about how big the bears are and how big the trucks are, and they're opening the doors. And unfortunately, the fate of those bears that we see, and we're all like, "Oh, look how talented they are," is death. And so, there is a, a group of people who are going to get together and come up with possible solutions to how we can deal with this a little different than having those bears be put down. So, I, they reached out to me because I was on the Assembly, but also because of my role in tourism and how much money our bear population brings to the island. And so, I am anxious to hear their alternate solutions to what they're, to what we're currently doing. So, I will be sure to report back to the Assembly with anything, and we'll work with the Solid Waste Advisory Board and see if there's anything that we can actually bring to fruition to maybe handle that problem differently, because it is really sad to see those magnificent creatures and how smart they really are and end up like that. So, I'll keep you updated if I hear anything about that, and that's all. Thanks.
Okay, and with that, I'll say the next Assembly work session is next Thursday, April 26, at 6:30. And after the work session, there will be a special meeting of the Assembly for a executive session. And that, the next regular meeting is scheduled for May 5, at 6:30, also in the Borough Chambers. With that, unless there's any objection, I will adjourn this meeting.
Mr. Mayor, we need the motion to adjourn.
No, you don't. Move to adjourn. I read it in Robert's Rules of Order that that man gave me. It says, "Without objection, I can adjourn." Okay, who made the motion, second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you.